Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, April 19th, 2021, and this is a regular Moscow City Council meeting. Brandy.
Good evening, all. Please rise and join me in the family of the leaders.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is required by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brandy. And right after this, I have Arbor Day proclamation that I would like to read. This is an annual thing for us. It was kind of mixed up a little bit when we did it last year in 2020, but we're on time this year for it. Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, Julius Sterling Morton, who became the Secretary of Agriculture under President Grover Cleveland, proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees. And whereas their resulting holiday Arbor Day was the first observed in that state with planting more than 1 million trees. And whereas Arbor Day is now recognized throughout the nation and the world, reminding us that one person's initiative can make a lasting and meaningful difference. And whereas the city of Moscow and the Moscow Tree Commission are committed to a community forestry program that supports a safe, healthy, and attractive urban forest. Whereas trees are renewable resources that yield fruit and nuts for food and profit, wood for construction, fuel for warmth, paper products, and a wide variety of other goods and materials. And whereas, when properly selected, planted in the right places, intended appropriately, trees increase property values, add beauty, enhance economic vitality of business districts, cut heating and cooling costs, and provide buffers from traffic. And whereas, trees intercept storm water, reduce runoff and erosion, clean air and water, produce oxygen, slow climate change by absorbing carbon dioxide, provide habitat for wildlife and moderate air temperature, and whereas, a healthy urban forest can bring a sense of vibrancy or respite, adventure or calm, escape or contentment, and connection to wild nature amidst asphalt and concrete. And whereas Arbor Day reminds us of the timeless observation by its founder, J. Sterling Morton, that each generation takes the earth as trustees. And whereas to celebrate Arbor Day in Moscow, the city of Moscow and the Moscow Tree Commission will plant three cherry trees at Lola Clyde Park with Palouse Roots students from PCEI on April 30th, 2021. Due to COVID-19, Arbor Day celebration will not be open to the general public. However, we ask members of our community to consider planting a tree this spring or fall in observation of Arbor Day. Now, therefore, I, Bill Lammerich, the mayor of the city of Moscow, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021 as Arbor Day in the city of Moscow, and urge all citizens to support the planting of trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations. Okay, folks, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Art and a second by Gina to approve the consent agenda as it is. I will start with Brandy.
I will abstain from voting on item F. Otherwise, aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And Anne. Is she out there somewhere?
No, she has her hand down, yeah.
Okay. With that be the consent agenda was approved on all areas. Item number F, you would note that Brandy abstained from that one, and the rest of the motion goes through. Okay. With that, let's move on to item number two, staff recognition report. Gary, do you have anything, sir?
This evening, your honor.
Mayor's appointments. I do not have any this evening. Item number three, item number four, public comment and mayor's response period. This is a period of time where we allow 15 minutes for folks to get up and visit with us, tell us what's on their minds, as long as it is not on this evening's agenda and/or something in front of Planning and Zoning and/or the Board of Adjustment. If you come up, please give us your name, and we will give you three minutes. Okay, I don't see anybody coming up, so I'm going to move on to item number five. Confirmation appointment of Jen Pifner as Human Resources Director and oath of office. Gary Redner will be doing this, as well as Lori Hopkins. Jen, are you with us out there this evening?
I am. Hello, good evening.
Good.
Thank you, your honor.
You're welcome.
Jen is attending by Zoom tonight. She's recovering from a little minor surgery, so she's here virtually. I recommended that Jen be appointed to the regular position of Human Resources Director. She's been serving in that capacity since May of 2018, when Mark Brigham, our previous Human Resources Director, left the employ of the city. She's done a good job in it so far. She has since been appointed Deputy City Supervisor. We reorganized the Human Resources Department, brought a half-time Human Resources Specialist, Kelly Jones, up to full-time to take care of most of the ministerial tasks of the position, leaving the Human Resources Director at a half-time position that is able also to do the discretionary work. So, as I said, Jen's been doing it, been doing a good job of it, an outstanding job of it, over the last almost three years. So, I recommended that to you. You made the appointment, and we're here to have that appointment voted on for confirmation by the council. And if confirmed, then the city clerk will administer the oath of office digitally to Jen.
So, we will have to have confirmation, so it doesn't need to necessarily be a motion, just they're in confirmation, and I ask each.
It'd be a motion to confirm your appointment.
I always support it. I've always wondered why it took her so long to get here. So, I'm drugged here, and I mean those reasons that it was, but she's been doing a great job, and we're happy to have you permanently here now, in that position.
Are you making that motion?
I thought you told me I didn't have to do a motion.
Carrie just told me I did, so.
Okay, it's a motion.
A motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion. By Maureen and the second by Sandra to confirm the appointment of Jen Pifner as Human Resources Director. And she will take the oath of office as soon as I go with Art.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
And Brandy.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, the oath of the office will proceed.
Digitally.
Yep.
I appreciate that very much.
You with me?
I have missed you.
All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
All the duties of Human Resources Director.
All the duties of Human Resources Director.
Of Moscow, Idaho, according to the best of my ability.
Of Moscow, Idaho, according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Jen. How is your sore foot doing?
Less sore every day, which is, that's good news. That's where it's supposed to be going. So, I appreciate you asking me. Thank you so much for asking, and thank you so much for this evening and your faith in me. I appreciate it.
Okay, well, yeah. Well, now, Jen, when will you be back in the office?
I'm working from home because I stay off my foot, but I will be back in the office next week.
Okay, that's great. You never know, I may have something for you to do, so.
I'm here. So, I'm good.
Thank you very much, Jen, and congratulations.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Okay. Now, with that, we are going to move on to item number six, which is a public hearing and ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 6 of the Moscow City Code regarding amendments of the Outdoor Lighting Code for the Public Art. We have Michael Ray with us tonight to present. Mike, how are you this evening?
Doing well, your honor. Council members. So, before unite, we have a proposed ordinance. This is amending the outdoor lighting section of the zoning code, and it's to address public art uplighting. So, this all originated really with the Homecoming, which is the latest addition of the Moscow's public art collection that was located at the Cuplet, C and Main Street. And as part of that whole process, the artist's scope of work included the creation of a lighting proposal for the site, and they recommended three fixtures that were more well-type fixtures located in the ground and focused on each of the panels. So, there's three panels as part of this piece. And so, this is the Homecoming, C and Main, North Cuplet. And so, artist Jennifer Corio and Dave Frye. And this was installed in July of 2020. And this was the proposal as far as the lighting. So, they had approximate lighting locations. You can see in the ground there, this is the top view. And then, we've got an elevation view. You can see those lights shining up on each of the three panels. So, internally, with the Arts Department, we've been discussing really the lighting of some of our prominent public art in the city. And this is really where that originated. Currently, the majority of lighting is required to be full cutoff, with uplighting only permitted in certain circumstances within our code. And the Arts Department ended up requesting that the Planning and Zoning Commission take a look at that possibility of inserting an exemption for public art uplighting for some of these prominent pieces. And some of the works that this would benefit would be this freestanding piece. This is at the Fire Station 3. This is the Waterspout, the north end of town. And then, we've got Helioterra, which is at the South Cuplet. This is part of the Wren Welcome Garden. So, taking a look at our current outdoor lighting code, it's typically all full cutoff. There are some exemptions. It's intended to be designed, kind of installed, maintained, to prevent light trespass on adjacent properties or the public street. The exemptions are in residential zones. We allow for fixtures of certain lumen levels to not be shielded or full cutoff, so if it's 400 lumens or less, doesn't need any shielding, really. 2,000 lumen wall-mounted fixtures below an eve. We've got angled floodlights, not more than 25-degree vertical, and some shielded floodlighting on a timer. And then, of course, if it's on a motion sensor, there are no restrictions either. Taking a look at non-residential zones, shall be full cutoff, except for some exceptions. Signs within all residential zones and non-residential zones are really permitted to be internally or externally illuminated, and it really just depends on the zoning district. So, a lot of the residential zones really needs to be externally illuminated, and they're allowed to shine up on the sign itself, as long as the source of illumination is not visible from any adjoining street or property. To present safety issues is where that requirement comes in. And then, for flagpole uplighting, so as long as it's set back at least 20 feet, and then there's a lumen threshold there, 13,000 for non-residential zones and 8,000 for residential zoning districts, but flagpoles are allowed to be uplit. And then, of course, this comes along with a lot of FCC regulations, lighting of communications and navigation towers required by law. And then, we also exempt out central business districts, so lighting of public spaces and public rights away in the central business district, as well as U of I campus and the historic district, provided the outdoor lighting is partially shielded and does not trespass on residential properties. So, the commission ended up conducting a field trip to the Helioterra Public Art Installation that happened earlier this year in January. And then, as a result of that field trip, they ended up directing staff to prepare an ordinance amendment to the lighting code to allow uplighting for public art. And it was really a hybrid modeled off for the flagpole and the sign regulation lighting requirements, certain elements of both. And this was a couple pictures of the field trip that the commission conducted. This is the Helioterra site, the South Cuplet. Scott Grob on the commission was gracious enough to present a few different fixtures. We had one that was 6,500 lumens. We had one that was 3,500 lumens, and then a smaller one that was 200 lumens. So, they got to take a look at, you know, what those lumen threshold really meant and what the lighting looked like. So, based upon that, the commission crafted an exemption for public art lighting, which states that lighting used for the illumination of government-owned freestanding public art displays, so long as the source of illumination is not visible from any adjoining street or property, and the maximum lumen output does not exceed 13,000 lumens in non-residential zoning districts and 8,000 lumens in residential zoning districts. So, really taking the flagpole uplighting restrictions and also applying the sign restrictions, saying that the source of illumination needs to be not visible. So, with that, staff's recommendation for the council is to consider public testimony and approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and then it be read by title and published by summary. And I'd certainly try to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, questions from Mike before I open the public hearing in council. Not at this moment, Mike. I guess we're good. So, I will go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:15. For any of those that would like to come up and speak on this ordinance, please come on up and tell us your name and state what your concerns may or may not be, or what your feelings are about this ordinance. I'm going to wait long enough for it to be 7:16 when I close it. I can't really wait. There's only going to be a few seconds way if somebody doesn't come up. Okay, with that, I'm going to close it at 7:16. Now, I'll move it on to council.
I do have one question.
Sandra.
Mike, I'm sorry. I don't know why I didn't jump out before, and I can't find it here in my packet. I was trying to scroll through fast enough. Can you go back to your, that last slide that you had up? I'm not sure that's an actual sentence, the new addition in the red.
Oh, the draft?
Yeah, in that draft. I just want, I was trying to look at that again real quick.
Six and D under two.
I just wanted to give it a quick look. I feel like it. Maybe I'm just being super weird. I'm always the first to admit that, but.
It's a long sentence.
It is, but I don't feel like, I mean, it's not telling me what. So, lighting used for illumination of a government-owned freestanding public art display, so long as the source of illumination is not visible from any adjoining street or property, not exceed all of those things, and the non-residential districts, and 8,000 lumens in residential districts, what?
I think it's because it lists up at number two, other exemptions, and then D is an exemption.
Great, thank you, Art. Sorry, Mike.
So, D float in after C.
So, is there any time limit at all associated with these exemptions?
No.
Okay. And is there any? I can't imagine a scenario, but mechanism if it was impacting residential unit, but the source was not visible, yet they still felt it was impacting them. Do they have any mechanism to pursue?
Well, they could certainly contact our, you know, Streets Department, our office. We deal with outdoor lighting. We certainly take a look at it. I mean, if the source of illumination needs to not be visible as part of this. So, you know, if they're, from wherever they're at, they can see the source of illumination, and that's affecting them, then we could certainly take a look at how we can alleviate that.
Yeah. The only thing I'm thinking of, but which, there's nothing that exists like this, but if the piece of art itself was metallic or something, and then it bounced light off of it, I mean, that would be a very unusual circumstance, but I suppose just some way that if there was some unforeseen impact that it could be responded to.
Well, I think that a lot of that's going to be addressed as part of the artist's proposal.
Yeah.
I think that moving forward, the Arts Department is going to work with these artists to design the lighting, as well as the artwork, to work together, just like this proposal.
Gary.
I would also note that this is the authorization to allow that sort of lighting. The Arts Department would, if there was a special circumstance, could certainly choose some other lighting option, as long as it did not exceed these amounts. So, I just can't imagine the Arts Department not working with some aggrieved citizen who actually had a concern that it was too bright for some reason because of the piece of art.
I think it's a great, it would be an improvement so that public art can be appreciated outside of just the daylight hours, and it provides a whole different look than in the daylight with the example of the Helioterra. So, I think it's great to have that as an exemption.
Okay.
Art. Just to comment that it seems to be an extension of what we already have in place for flagpole lighting hardly differs at all. So, I can see that as not being detrimental, as long as we don't put up a public art disco mirror ball up there or something.
There, that would be the problem.
But, yes, I just see it as a logical extension to allow after-dark appreciation of the public artwork.
Okay. Other comments from other councilors? Gina.
I'm going to do a motion.
Okay.
I'm, your honor, I move we approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and then it be read by title and published by summary.
Second. Brandy. Brandy got the second. Gina got the first, the motion. Okay, we have a motion by Gina and a second by Brandy. To approve the ordinance under the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and then it be read by title and published by summary, or start the roll with Maureen.
Aye.
Brandy.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
And Gina.
Aye.
Okay, so now, I will read. This is ordinance number 2021-04. An ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title IV, Chapter 6, providing for the amendment of the outdoor lighting code to allow lighting for public art, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Thank you, Mike, very much. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number seven, which is storm water user fee credits and waivers summary. We've got Tyler Palmer with us this evening.
Mayor, council, it's wonderful to be here. And what, I don't see in our slideshow for this. Give me just a minute.
I fear for your laptop.
I think it's balanced, Art. I think we're going to be okay. Okay. All right, as the mayor mentioned, Mayor, council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm here to discuss our storm water user fee credits and waivers. This is a process, as you guys have been well aware, that we've been working through for quite some time now. The establishment of a utility is no small task. It's been decades and decades and decades since a utility was established in the city, and with the issuance of our MS4 permit through the EPA, which categorizes our storm system as a permitted storm system. And as you all know, we became permitted last October, October of 2019. With that permit came a variety of regulations that we have to adhere to. That permit, which is called an NPDES permit, a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, permit, is issued by the EPA to assure that our storm water runoff doesn't have a negative effect on the receiving water bodies. And so, we try and minimize the environmental impact of our storm water runoff. So, for many, many decades, we've done pretty reactive maintenance to our storm water system, and this really requires us to be far more proactive, and it has a number of additional provisions. So, through the process of establishing this storm water utility, which the council adopted an ordinance enabling a storm water utility a few months ago in a city council meeting, this is the next step in preparing to actually launch the utility in October of this year. And what this is, is this is, these are the credits and user fees. And what the intent of this is, is as with all of our utilities, we need to try to make sure that we are distributing the cost and the burden of the utility as evenly as possible and reflecting the actual use of the user of the system. And so, as we've discussed previously, in establishing this, we look at impervious surface. An impervious surface is what is used as the calculating device to determine the impact in the loading on a storm system. This set of waivers and credits is, what it intends to do is to, it's a really good tool to incentivize and reward activities that reduce the cost of providing management of the system and the services, and also recognize customers who lessen their impact on the storm system. And so, it's a way that we can reward those activities that do actually lessen the impact on the system and reward the activities that help us mitigate some of the management expenses that the city otherwise incurs in meeting the provisions of our permit. So, I am just going to run through a few items here. As you are aware, effective 2019, our initial storm water permit is a five-year permit. We have five years to come into compliance with all stipulations that are within the permit. The city council gave staff direction that we delay the launch of this utility. We had intended to launch last October, but in recognition of the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, we, staff was directed to look for a way to continue to meet the provisions of our permit, but to see if we could delay the launch, which we have done, but it really does have, give us a pretty compressed timeline to meet the provisions of our permit. So, the credits that are being proposed here, these are very common credits that are applied with storm water utilities throughout the country. And I'm just going to run fairly quickly through these, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have as we go through. We have onsite gravel areas is one that we can apply a credit to. One of the issues that we'll have is, in some places, gravel is just used as a landscaping feature, in which case it's not compacted, and it's really no different than any other landscaping feature. It's allowing water to permeate through. It's not adding to the impermeable surface, and therefore, the runoff from the property. And so, gravel that's just used for landscaping in a non-compacted area that isn't being driven on can have up to 100% waiver. And gravel that is not being used for landscaping, but is rarely driven on, not compacted gravel, so not intended as a driveway or something like that, can get up to a 50% waiver. We have K to 12 educational activities. This is a 20% waiver. What this applies to is we have an educational component that is required in our permit. We have to have a public education system, and the schools, our K to 12 educational institutions are huge partners for us in this process. And so, we have a curriculum that's been developed, and with that curriculum, we go out, we make arrangements with the schools, and we go out and do public education in the schools. And so, that really helps our program, and it helps our youth grow up understanding how to interact with the storm water system. You know, you go to talk to a lot of these kids in these schools, they know that that storm drain is different than the sewer. They know that it goes to the creek untreated. It's not like the sewer system, and they understand these things, and it changes the way that they interact with it. You know, you'll have kids telling their parents, hey, don't dump the motor oil down there. That's not, it doesn't go where you think it goes. So, that's a big, it's a big help for our program, and therefore, that's why they are offered that discount. There's also another, if we have an NPDES permit holder within the city, currently there is only one other permit in the city, and that's the University of Idaho's, but it is possible with future development that, you know, a large commercial site could potentially have its own permit. Since they are having to meet many of the same provisions that we have to meet within their system, then that diminishes the loading once it reaches our system. So, in recognition of the work that they are already doing within their own system, there's a discount that's applied there. Direct dischargers, direct dischargers are people who, the storm water doesn't ever hit a city storm water infrastructure before it hits the receiving water body. So, this is in recognition that there's a diminished cost for us. We still have to do a lot of the maintenance things we have to do generally, the sweeping, the maintenance of the creek, which is the receiving water body, all of those things, but there is a reduced, there is a reduced loading from those properties. And then, also onsite retention. And onsite retention can vary based on how much onsite retention they have. If it's 100% onsite retention, never a drop is coming off of this place, then it can be up to 100% waiver for those properties. We have non-use and vacant undeveloped property. These are, these are both largely, if a property is in its original condition and is not adding more than what was the natural condition of the land, so that's really what, and when the EPA looks at this, it's, how was the land before human beings got here? Before we came and we started building things on this, what was the impact on these, on these water bodies? And so, if a land is in its complete and natural condition, then there would be the potential for a waiver there. Our public roads, our public roads really are part of our storm water conveyance system. system. Um, and so we have our curbs, our gutters, um, those, those are, those are all areas, those are part of that conveyance system. And so they, those are, those are waived. Also, we have our city-owned buildings and facilities. Um, with the city as the service provider, this is in keeping with the way that we manage our other utilities, so, you know, it's, we, we don't charge city hall a water bill or a sewer bill because we are the service provider. And so rather than, you know, taking from this hand to hand it over to that hand, um, as, that is, that's just part of this, the management of the system. Um, our public parks, open spaces, trails, and paths, and these are all really in keeping with common practices throughout the country with storm utilities. Um, so that's, those are the, those are the waivers and discounts, um, that we will have, we will have a process of appeal, so if somebody thinks that one of these waivers or discounts apply to them, we have gone through and applied these to all the properties that we know they would apply to. So we're really trying to take the legwork out of it for the property owner. We, we know that this is onerous, we know that this is, this is not a fun thing, it's not, it's not super fun for us to have to do either. And so we're trying to make it as easy as possible, so we've gone through this process and identified all the properties that we know this applies to and it will be, it will be applied in the original utility billing database that we then use to start billing in October. Um, but if for any reason, any of our customers do think one of these apply to them, there will be a process through which they can submit some information to us, we can check it out and make sure that we have the appropriate charges being applied to any given property. And so we will do, we will continue with our public outreach. Um, as we spoke with, uh, the committee and previously with the council, we've had a pretty robust public outreach program going. We have completed our first two phases of public outreach, which included any property that had five equivalent service units or more. Um, and so that included, uh, a certified mailing and then also a follow-up phone call to field any questions that they might have and we've, we've completed all of those. Um, we've had social media outreach, there's a webpage built, we have a, a video that we've, that we have it populated with to really try and explain what it is that's happening. Um, and then we will be finalizing the database, coming back to council with a final rate and the utility billing database, um, and then hopefully moving forward toward implementation of the utility. So, uh, with that, I would stand for any questions you might have about this, uh, the storm water, uh, user fee and credit program.
Art? Uh, just for benefit of everybody, could you define what a service unit is?
A service unit is, it was determined, Art, by taking a look at the impervious service, the impervious services citywide in the residential areas and establishing an average amount of impervious service. And so it's an actual measurement, an actual average for the city of Moscow of the average amount of impervious surface on a residential lot. And then that was lab, that is one equivalent service unit. And so then as, as, as we apply that rate, for example, to a large commercial site, it's just literally a counting of how many of those they might have. And so it might be 15, they have 15 equivalent service units because that's how much impervious surface they have and therefore it's an accurate measurement of their impact in comparison to that average residential unit.
Brandy, and then I'll go to you, Maureen, next.
So, um, how often is the total impervious surface recalculated as, as undeveloped land is developed?
So, so this will become part of the process of development. And so, so when somebody comes in and submits a plan set, much like we already do with the other utilities, so, so there's already a determination, okay, this is going to be your water need, this is going to be your sewer need. And so you need, you've got this many fixtures, you're this big, you need this size of water meter. Similarly with the storm, that will be determined. And then as permits come in, even for like a large remodel, say somebody expands and they add a whole bunch of, of, of roof space and, and parking lot. Then through that permitting process, through our community planning and design group, that would be picked up and then that would be applied to their bill, just like any of the other utilities.
I guess I have one other, but just so, uh, but as far as, so that explains how they would be billed when they turn something that's not developed into something developed. But do you have, as far as the, the service units, did you say that they're based off of the total impervious surfaces in the entire city?
It's based on the residential impervious surface. So the residential, in order to establish the unit, that you'd look at the residential properties and you take the average residential unit and then that becomes the, the ESU, the equivalent service unit. So, so for example, Brandy, if, if, say a residential property goes from bare earth to building a house, there's, the, the commercial properties are measured exactly. And so we're measuring those exactly. The residential properties, we have three categories. A lot of places just have one, it's like if you're a resident, you get one. We, we wanted to make sure that we had it as equitable as possible, so we established three, so that a 700 square foot home with a very small driveway isn't paying the same as a 4,000 square foot home with a three-car driveway, so that we better, we better reflect that. And so when somebody builds from bare property to that, then if it's commercial, it'll be measured exactly. If it's residential, it will fall into one of those three categories.
Okay, Maureen.
So you don't go on an individual look at existing homes right now, have you?
We have, so, so there, in, in creating the ESU, there was a, there was a comprehensive look done, um, a lot of it with aerial photography and, and it was actually measured. There's a software that goes through, does measurements, and then there's a certain percentage of the properties that are gone back and verified. And so we filled, verify the accuracy of the model and, you know, this, it's, it's pretty amazing how far the software has come and how much easier that process has become. But yes, so there, there were actual measurements that were taken and then a percentage were filled, verified.
That was easier because I sat there and thought, they're not walking around to every house, that would be crazy. Um, that would take an enormous amount of time.
Yeah.
And you said that you thought that they, we had five years to do it and you don't think there's any problem with us meeting that requirement in our five-year period, even though we're starting almost two years late?
It, it's ambitious, but, but we believe, we believe we'll certainly make it. Uh, you know, we, our, our environmental services department came up with a really good plan in conjunction with our maintenance folks when we were asked to delay. And so we looked at what can we keep going, what are the things we can continue to do and, and how can we creatively get that done? And so we, we backloaded everything that we could possibly backload into the last three years of the permit. So we're going to meet the permit. We, we will do it. It'll, it'll take some legwork, but we'll do it.
Gina?
I read this and, and I, I must have, similar to most of the day-to-day, phased in and out of paying attention with city government, but, um, my question for you is, in the appeals process, who's on the committee that decides?
So, so much like many of our other appeals, we'll have, the, the ultimate appeal body is city council. You know, people can appeal right up through, but the initial appeal will come in and we'll have a committee that is comprised of a representative in the environmental services department, the storm department, and probably the storm water inspector. And so those three will take a look and, and mostly with the, through the appeals process, that will entail physically looking at the property. There's, there's an application that's being developed and we'll be bringing that through as well, so council can see the actual application in that process. And so there'll be an application that they say, you know, okay, provide us the following information, we come out, field verify, trot through it with people. So that will be a more lengthy process of working through with the applicant.
Sandra, do you have?
Well, and to follow up on that, then, it, it seems like you could really get bogged down in this part. Do you have a plan set ahead if there are a lot of these appeals that you have to go out to?
You know, I, I think, Sandra, that with the public outreach that we've done thus far, um, there, there's an amazing amount of accuracy, so all the commercial properties have been measured. And so, so those are the large impact properties and those have all been measured. And so there may be a few of those that it's like, well, you know, this actually does this, not this, and I think it might be different. But we've also already, we're already making personal contact with those folks, we're talking through these things already. Um, the residential, the categories are broad enough that really the only residential places that are, are going to be the ones that are right on that cusp between one category and another. And when we're talking about the difference between those two, you're talking about a difference of maybe a couple bucks a month. And so I don't anticipate that we'll have a huge deluge of properties just because there is quite a level of accuracy with the measurements already. And so it would really just be, hey, you know, the aerial photography seems to have thought that my, my landscaping rock was a driveway. And, and I actually have, you know, 300 fewer square feet than what you thought I did and I'm right on that cusp in between the two, that, we, we don't anticipate that we'll have too many that fall into that category, but we will be prepared to process those so that we make sure we get through them.
Thank you.
Well, I'll let, hang on a second, Gina, I'll come back to you, but what I'd like to do is see if there's anybody with public comment. Now, Tyler, that may have one of these questions or something that we could be answered. So if there's anybody from the public that would like to come up and speak on this or ask questions on this, come on up and state your name, I'll give you three minutes and we'll see what you think. And I don't have any, okay, Victoria, come on up and, I know who you are, but you probably need to tell our viewers who you are.
Victoria Seaver, Moscow, I just had a question. I thought you said square feet, like a 700-foot residence? So a residence can have stories. I mean, it's really got to be the footpad, right? Okay, that was my question.
Okay.
Because a three-story house, it's got wood, it's smaller than that.
Well, we're going to have folks out there that are going to have questions like this, uh, Victoria too, they'll just, we'll need some answers because it's square foot of the area, not the height of the square foot. Now Gina, I'll come back to you.
Thank you. Um, so a follow-up on the appeals process. Say I'm a business and I've got a $800 monthly charge and I want to look for ways to make that 500. Can I work with you guys and try to find a way that I can alleviate some of that burden?
Absolutely, Gina, and that's something that we really encourage and that is, that is part of the, the waivers and claims is, that's, that's when you, if we have people that put in alternate control measures that diminish their impact on that storm system, so it might be an oil-water separator, it might be that they say, hey, you know, we can actually remove some impervious surface and put in a detention plant, they can have an enormous impact on, on their bill that way in perpetuity. And now granted, there will be, for a lot of that stuff, a fairly decent upfront cost, but over time, you know, for a lot of people, and, and we can really help them work, we have staff really well-versed in this at this point, that can help them identify what options they might have on their properties and, and we stand ready to help people through that process to help them identify options to potentially reduce their burden.
That might be the best thing you said all night, thank you.
Brandy?
Will, um, individual customers, whether residential or commercial, be, be given specifics about what their calculated surface is? Like X amount was your house and this part was your driveway or?
Mm-hmm. So, so our, in our, in our outreach to all of the, all of the commercial customers that's happened, the, the letter included their calculation and the estimated bill based on that calculation, so that we could get them in the ballpark. We haven't finalized that rate yet, we will be bringing that back to council, but in an attempt to get them thinking about, okay, this is ballpark-y, but this, but, but their measurement is within that. In the residential category, we will push out the residential categories, and so the square foot categories, but we won't be sending out individualized letters to every resident saying, you had 2,147, you had, you know, et cetera. And so the, so for the residential, no, for all the commercial, yes, an individualized letter has gone out.
Okay.
Victoria, come on back up here, Victoria.
Okay, rooftops made me think of it. Roof, you're, you're dealing with the runoff, right? And, and I don't quite understand, it goes into the ground rather than into the street. But some people will also have those rain barrels that capture the water. How does all that figure in?
He has an answer for that too, because it was part of the discussion, so go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so yeah, Victoria, that's, um, so yeah, it, it's a little bit, so impervious surfaces, even if, you know, one, we have, uh, we have some pretty thick clay layers in, in Moscow and so a lot of the water sheets off of a property regardless. Um, we, we do not have within the program an exemption for rain barrels in that, once a rain barrel's full, everything comes out. And so if we got into the level of nuance of trying to calculate how much was captured versus how much isn't and how much is flowing out, that would become a, a highly complicated process for something that we have to try and implement across over 6,000 properties. And so there aren't provisions for that, but there are certainly provisions for, you know, if, 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 you know, this really is an impervious surface. If, if it's impervious surface, it's an impervious surface, but if it's like, you know, like we said before, you know, this is uncompacted gravel, this is how this works, you know, this should not be counted toward that impervious surface. We're really looking for roofs, driveways, compacted gravel, those are, those are the things that we're trying to capture.
Are there other folks out in the, uh, audience that would like to speak on this? Okay, well, I'll turn back over to council. Art?
Well, I would, uh, move that we adopt the system storm water user fee credits and waivers.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Art and a second by Sandra to adopt the storm, uh, the system storm water user fee credits and waivers. I will start the roll, did you have a comment?
I'll just comment too that I know you could have made it a lot simpler for you by just having a flat fee, so I really appreciate having the three different tiers for the residential because I know that was a lot more work and everything can't be exact, but that's a lot more than many cities have done, so I appreciate that.
Thanks, Brandy.
Okay, I'll start the roll with you, Brandy.
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
And Art?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, Tyler. Okay, we will move on to item number eight, which is the Lee Newbill Safety Fair donation request. We've got Captain Roger Lanier with us this evening. Captain Lanier, come on up, sir, and you have got the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time tonight. Uh, I'll be as brief as I can. I want to talk to you tonight about the Lee Newbill Kids Safety Fair. The Kids Safety Fair has been a staple of, of Moscow community events for a number of years and it's named after Moscow's only fallen officer, Lee Newbill. So it's, it's very dear to the hearts of the police department. And, uh, kind of the centerpiece of the safety fair is the bicycle helmet giveaway, which the police department has always managed that. And we've been fortunate enough to put about 500 to 600 helmets a year in the hands of primarily, uh, grade school age kids, just in time for the summer riding season. The fair is usually the first Saturday in June. And then last year, COVID hit and just like many other events, the safety fair was canceled and we weren't able to put the helmets in the hands of the children. So as the committee, the safety fair committee began planning this year, we, like a lot of other folks, tried to outguess the COVID pandemic and to put something like that together, you have to plan a number of months ahead. So with some of the trends up and down, we thought that it was probably risky time-wise to plan an event for the first week of June and then have to cancel it at the last minute. So we started looking at a lot of alternatives and we all agreed in the committee, and the committee is a, I'm on the committee and represent the city and the police department, but the committee is a pretty broad representation of folks in the community rotary clubs and whatnot. We all agreed that going two years in a row without putting helmets in the hands of school-aged children was, uh, probably the least satisfactory outcome. So we really focused on how we could do that. And after some discussion, um, the Safe Routs to School offered to expand a program that they already have used successfully where they go to, to the kids in the school. And we agreed that a, a large number of very small events was a lot safer and we partnered with the Moscow School District. Uh, Dr. Bailey was very generous in allowing us to go to each school and set up an event there. So once we put that together, it came time to fund the purchase of 500 to 600 helmets. And we've done that in various, uh, various ways over the past several years, fundraisers, also, uh, um, the Moscow Am, Volunteer Ambulance Company has donated money, but we've never had a lot of budgeted money, any budgeted money for that, so, uh, perhaps that's a future discussion for the police department budget. Uh, the Safe Routs to School has $1,000 that they can contribute to this. The Lee Newbill Safety Fair Committee is going to contribute $2,000 and so we are asking the city council to approve $2,000 of city money, unallocated city funds, so that we have $5,000 to purchase helmets. We, we feel like that will be enough. We also anticipate more helmets going out this year because we're essentially taking the show to the children as opposed to expecting just to stop by the safety fair, so captive audience, so to speak. So we've already got three events planned. Those events are going to be staffed, of course, by Safe Routs to School, Aaron Bacon, and then we will have the police department represented and then we have some Rotarians and some other folks that are willing to volunteer and then, though I'm sure there'll be some school staff. So that is the request tonight and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
First, before we get to- First, before we get to Roger, Gary, could you identify where this $2,000 would come from?
Thank you, Your Honor. Every year, the council puts approximately $20,000, budgets $20,000 in legislative non-prioritized projects. Those are for things that come up throughout the year. As you know, we appropriate funds for individual funds, individual projects, that sort of thing. These are for unidentified projects, should any be identified throughout the year. If the council does not expend it, then of course, it rolls over into the following year.
Okay, very good. Okay, Brandy.
Would you remind us if we have expended any of that?
You have not. This would be the first $2,000 of the $20,000 line item.
Question for Captain Lanier. Gina.
I'm gonna ask you again. I asked you this at committee, and I'm gonna ask you again. Are you sure $2,000 is enough?
Yeah, we think so. We, we get a fairly good deal because we buy the helmets in bulk. Of course, part of it is a guess, but we're, we're able, we think, to purchase about 750 helmets with $5,000 that, you know, meet the safety needs of the children. They're primarily the smaller sizes, so that's our best guess, but I think we're good.
Okay.
Brandy had another question. Brandy?
Are you just going to the K through six, or is this all the way through 12, or?
It, it's primarily K through six.
Yeah.
We will consider middle-school kids, depending, certainly it's a time crunch, because we have to try to do these prior to school getting out.
Well, this is one of my very favorite all-time things. I've been, had the chance to work with Safe Routes to School in different capacities, stored their bicycles in different times, and I think this is great, and I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
That, I gotta put my glasses on, though, that we approve $2,000 from the legislative non-prioritized projects for purchase of bicycle helmets for the 2021 Lee Newbill Safety Fair.
Second?
Okay, and I know Maureen had a question, so I'm gonna go to Maureen before I-
So, now that it's been approved, how long is it gonna take you to get the helmets, so that we can actually have this done before the end of the year?
About seven to 10 days, once we place the order. So, and we're ready to move on that. We've already contacted vendors and whatnot.
Okay. Okay, well, Sandra made a motion, and Gina seconded that motion to recommend that the approval of $2,000 from legislative non-prioritized projects, 101 days, 010 days, 10 days, 670 days, 16 for the purchase of bicycle helmets for 2021 Lee Newbill Safety Fair. And I'll start the role with Art.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Sandra.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
And Brandy.
Aye.
Captain Lanier, you've got that money for the Safety Fair. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you so much. We really do appreciate it.
Goodbye.
We appreciate you work on it.
Absolutely. Good work. Well, that's the end of our agenda, but we will go into reports this evening. And I think I'm gonna start with Gary with the COVID-19 report.
Right.
That we promised we would give folks at the meeting each month. You're welcome. It'll take me a minute to figure out how this works again.
Yes, I would like some help.
We have two people can do this. Corey, of course, she's a natural, and Corey.
Which one is it?
And this is the nice thing about having staff. They know how to do all these things. I'd be terrible at it, folks. Okay, now you're ready to go, Gary.
Thank you. As you indicated, Your Honor, the, we were going to give a COVID report every second council meeting, second council meeting of the month, to determine where the city was with the COVID metrics that were adopted by the city council in December of 2020. As you know, the current amended public health emergency order was extended by resolution of the city council to expire on June 9, 2021, to coincide with the time when Moscow School District lets out for summer vacation. Council at that time then determined that they wanted to have metrics similar to those that were put in place by the North Central Health District, and those are A through, A through C, based on a seven-day moving average. New daily cases must be less than one case per 12, 10,000 population. For our county, that would be approximately four or fewer daily cases. Second, based on a seven-day moving average, the number of confirmed COVID-19 hospital admissions district-wide must be within the range of zero to five. And lastly, test results must be reported in one to four days. So, continuing on, once those three metrics are met, then we look to the state of Idaho to determine what stage we are in under the Idaho Rebounds Plan. Then, provided that those two previous metrics are met, then the recommendation of Public Health Idaho North Central District, Carol Merle is the director of that entity. And then, a review of recommendations by our institutional partners, including Leittau County, Gritman Medical Center, U of I, Moscow School District. And lastly, because we are located so close to Whitman County, a review of COVID-19 conditions and metrics in Whitman County as well. So, let's go through where we are. As you can see, this is a confirmed COVID cases in Leittau County. This is the 15th of April. As you can see, it was up a little bit for the last two weeks. It is coming down again, or it was as of today. So, utilizing those first three metrics, as I indicated, average cases per week, four or less. As you can see, April 5, the week of April 5, the seven-day moving average is three. Very excited about that. Then it jumped up the following week to 7.43. We're trending down again at 6.14 cases on the seven-day moving average. Then, average days for test results. We've always been green in that area. The good work of Gritman Medical Center, University of Idaho, has provided us with a pretty quick turnaround on test results. Regional hospitalizations are actually down, as you can see. We were up above five district-wide the week of April 5, the week of April 12, but we are now down to 3.14 on the week of April 19. So, going to the next level. So, we haven't met any, these metrics have to be all in the green for three consecutive weeks, so we are not there yet. But we'll look at the others as well. Idaho Rebounds, we still remain in Stage 3. The governor has not taken us up to Stage 4 as of yet, or returned us to Stage 4. Institutional Partners recommendations, we've received nothing from the institutional partners, indicating that they think that it would be time, and would ask the council to remove the social distancing direction. So then we get into Whitman County, and these are, this is published on their website. So, as you can see, cases per 100,000 population over, per 14 days, they're cumulative. They should be at 25 or less. As you can see, they're well above 25, 291. They had quite a situation in Whitman County prompting Governor Inslee to reduce Whitman County's rating from Stage 3, or Phase 3, to Phase 2. And total hospitalizations are cumulative now. They no longer publish estimate of current hospitalizations from week to week. So, as you can see, from all of these metrics, we are getting closer, but we're not quite there yet.
Well, we're, five of the nine, we're in the green, is, so that's well over 50%. So, we're inching along. Folks have been very patient, and we're, we're making it there. You know, with the vaccines, we read where, the other day, where Gritman had surpassed 10,000 shots, and we know very well, that probably within the next three, four weeks, we'll be pretty good as far as those folks that want to be vaccinated within our county, and that's pretty exciting news as well. So, we're inching forward. In a few weeks, the university will be out of school, and we're, we're chugging along. So, questions for Gary, councilors?
With that, Your Honor, I have no further report.
Thank you, Gary, for that report. Okay, I'm gonna start with Art next on reports.
Reports. Last week, on Thursday, there was an open house out at the Best Western concerning the airport terminal design, and that was very informative. And things are progressing well for the design and funding for a 50,000-square-foot terminal to replace our current 97-square-foot terminal, which would enable three jet gates, a couple of Q400 gates, and really expand the potential for the airport to provide service to more airports than just Seattle. And we're looking forward to moving that forward. Moscow Fire Department met, and mostly dealt with issues of consolidating different accounts as they moved to a different governance system for the fire department, away from company status into stations, and that required the consolidation of a good many funds. So, there's been financial peas flying underneath the walnut shells like a crazy on this one, but they're getting it done. And they also discussed everything to do with more fundraising coming up as we return to business more normally in town. They're looking forward to going back to having more in-person fundraisers for the fire department. So, those were the two that I had.
Okay, I'll go to Brandy.
The Arts Commission, let's see, they are sending out their request for qualifications for the next poet laureate, that will be the 2021 to 24 Moscow poet laureate. They're also working on public arts guidelines. We're all gonna see vinyl wraps on our utility boxes going up between now and the end of June. Mayor's Arts Awards Selection Panel membership, that was discussed. And also, I just wanted to show everyone this great little flyer here, around many places, the chamber, you can get them here in City Hall. There's discussion about some other places to have these available, but they're down in the Arts Department also. But this is just a very succinct, straightforward way in response to a lot of artists and community members asking for information about what are the different opportunities out there as an artist.
Excuse me, Brandy, could you make sure you're speaking to the microphone?
Sorry.
Thank you.
I do the same thing. I'm moving around.
I think I'm like rolling away from it. Okay. So, this is the Artist Directory. It also is a place to go to look for what different projects are going on in the city, where, where artists can submit their work, or apply to be selected, and mailing lists for artists and so on. So, this is a great piece that they've created. The current exhibit coming up April 15, that's here right now, is the Silver and Gold in the Third Street Gallery here in City Hall. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you, Brandy Maureen.
P&amp;Z met, and they spent most of their time talking about subdivisions and the annexation of subdivisions. And they talked about the question of, without any answers, you know, how do we develop and maintain our land, and make it easier to walk, bike, et cetera? The biggest concern is about cars, and making sure that transportation is a big critical issue that is addressed in that process, and how do we reduce the number of cars is important. And the big unfortunate news was, well, great news for Wendy McClure and her husband, they're moving away, but Wendy McClure has been
Oh, boy.
An anchor in P&amp;Z for at least seven or eight years, and always kind of served as the lead of it. And that was her last meeting, this last one, so she was sad to go.
She was the lead at the historical preservation, too, and did an excellent job. She'll, she will be missed by the community. She did a wonderful job.
And the other one is human rights, and it has not, it meets this week.
Okay, thank you, Maureen. Gina?
Transportation Commission had eight, seven people in attendance, and we still could not reach a quorum. We were going to speak about climate change mitigation and adaptation strategies, and then my home internet gave me fits, and I could not hear the discussion in spite of the lack of a quorum. I also attended the airport open house as well, and, and thought that it is really nicely designed, and I think it fits with kind of our communities and our region. I think it's very nice. I also attended an achingly long AIC Spring Legislative Extravaganza today. And, and honestly, I learned, I thought that there was some, some good information in the afternoon that was unfortunate that it was in the afternoon. I think they ought to put the legislative update in the afternoon. So, if we're gonna sleep, we can sleep then, and we can learn something good.
Okay. Sandra?
Dang, I can't top that. All I have to report on this week is our Pathways Commission, and they're gonna be speaking to us soon, so I don't want to sell a lot of their thunder. But I would say one of the bigger discussions came about Bike to Work Day, which is May 21. And typically, they'll set up, often by One World, sometimes by Violina, but somewhere in that area. And there was, you know, concern, of course, about COVID, and how can they reach out to people, because they usually like to serve treats. And so, I think the consensus came to, instead of treats, they've come up with a really nice brochure about the pathways in our area. And to have them there, so people can pick them up on their own, or put them in little different piles, so people can grab them without having to have a lot of contact. And so, I took a look at one of them, and they're, they're really nice, and I learned about more paths that I can try and ride my bike on, or trip over my dog on, and it should be nice. So, and I do know that they're putting together a nice presentation, and I think y'all will enjoy that when they come here, which is in the next time or two, I believe.
Sweet. Well, as Art and Gina had talked about, on April 8, we had that open house for the terminal, which at the Best Western, which was actually really a, a fun evening. We had a number of people there that went through it, and there were some absolutely excellent exhibits. And they did that the night before, on the, on the 7th, in Pullman as well, so both communities could really take a good look at that, to move our area forward in transportation. And of course, as I've said all along, as others have as well, we don't have a freeway, we do not have a water system, we don't have a rail system. Our only great form of transportation is this airport in the future. And so, the exciting thing about that is looking forward, not just now, and 10 years from now, but 60 years from now. So, this thing, as we go through, both these fine universities, these two fine towns, and these two fine counties, called De Palouse, will be, has something that can be very admired. Also, as Gina had mentioned, being in an AIC district meeting today, she was not the only one there, folks. Maureen was there as well. I was there, Art was there. And Art Beckey got elected to District 2 for the Board of Directors for Associate of Idaho City, so he will be joining me with that as well. And, and we talked the legislative thing. I gotta talk just a little bit about legislators, because I, every Friday, I am in a meeting, an AIC legislative meeting. And I gotta tell you, this is the craziest damn year I've ever seen. I can't, I don't, I'd have some other words, but they're not proper to say, so I'll keep those thoughts to myself. But this is really an interesting time that we're going through, folks. And so, one thing I will, you know, and we'll just leave it at that, I, gosh, I've got no idea. They're talking about going another week, and in recess for a while, and coming back, and so on and so forth. I don't have any clue how long they're gonna string this thing out. But I guess we'll just, every one of us, including board members, will be in suspense until something happens. And I know that some of those things, like property taxes and some of these other initiatives, are actually, in a way, they're not even talking about it. But I got this feeling when it becomes the last day, ka-ching, they're gonna run those things through. That's what I think. But who knows? We'll just have to see what happens with that. So, more, more information to come. And with that, I want to make a personal announcement. For those out there, in six and a half months, there will be a fall election, and I do not plan to seek office again this fall. So, I just wanted everybody to know that, in all fairness. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session per Idaho Code 74206, 1C and F, and this meeting will not reconvene.
But before that happens, we all want to thank you for your years of service, and thanking you for giving everyone notice that you in fact intend to retire, and that you'll be missed terribly.
Thank you very much, Maureen. In all fairness to everybody, I wanted to announce it way early. So, thank you.
I moved to adjourn.
Okay, Maureen moved to adjourn to executive session. I have a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned at 8:09, folks. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.